Uh, we will, um, appreciate everyone being here for this Facebook Live session for our first meeting in November. Before we call the meeting to order, I will ask City Clerk to call role. We have some of our aldermen who are joining us telephonically and also via video. And so we'll just get a formal role call first. Ms. Hardin?
Alderman Carver.
Present.
Alderman Sistrum.
Here.
Alderman Little.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
All right, we have a full complement of board members, so I'll call this meeting to order. We, our first, uh, action will be to stand for the Sledge of Allegiance. Alderman Sistrum is going to give us our invocation, and we'll follow that with a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance, which is mine, of the United States of America, and to uphold what we share. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Sistrum, if you'd have a minute. Tonight, I'd like to offer a prayer for the elections that we are having today. Loving God, Creator of this world, who is our source of our wisdom and understanding, watch over this nation during this time of election. Guide us through this election of the nation, state, and community as we vote for people to do our work on our behalf and on behalf of our communities. We pray for this nation that is deeply divided. May we come together for the common good and do as you have called us to do, to act justly, love mercy, and walk humbly with you through creation. Help us to listen and love, work together in peace, and collaborate with one another as we seek the betterment of our communities and worlds through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
All right. Again, thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. This is our regular meeting of November the third. Our first, and let me say this in case anybody hasn't, you've still got an hour and a half to go vote, right? Polls do not close till seven. So if anybody wants to get up and run out because you haven't done so, please do so. It's more important. Okay, um, first item or business is a approval of the official agenda for the consented items. Do we have any changes to the consented items? And I will go through the board members individually because since we have some who are not here, I want to make sure everyone gets an opportunity to be heard. So, uh, Alderman Vaughn, we'll start with you. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins, any changes to the agenda or additions to the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, I have three items to the consent agenda, both the resolutions that we are seeking to consider tonight for submission to the legislature, and the, uh, street policy. I'd like to add that street policy to the, um, consent agenda. And finally, I'd like to add to the airport matter to the, uh, consent agenda.
All right, Vice Mayor, uh, I will canvass the board on, on those things. I must say, however, number two under the airport, uh, Alderman Carver has to recuse himself from that particular item, so that's the reason it was not on the consent agenda.
Mayor, uh, Mr. Trent, can the, um, if we put down a consent, can the record reflect that the gentleman wanted to recuse on that matter?
We can if we note that in the minutes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, what that being said, that, that objection?
None, none, I mean.
Okay, good. All right, then that takes my affirmation. Do we have any, uh, any problems with the consented items as Vice Mayor has suggested? Any?
Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that the library matter not be added to consent agenda.
Okay, so the resolution regarding the library matter, you wish to be stricken from the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna have a few, yes, ma'am, I'm gonna have a few questions about it.
Okay, all right, that'll be fine. Then we will remove the resolution as it relates to the library. Uh, this is all, I think, this is all one, uh, one item on the agenda. So what I'm gonna do is we'll just take that one off since we have to discuss it anyway, and, uh, we'll just leave that one that way, and then we'll come back to it. And if we take a separate vote on it, if we need to take a separate vote on it, we can do that. All right, so that being said, we have, uh, two items to add to the agenda, which would be the Starkville Street Maintenance. And then, uh, with the noted, with it noted in the minutes that, uh, Alderman Carver is recusing from the item under the airport, those two items, uh, for the consent items. All right, uh, Vice Mayor Perkins, is that the extent of your changes?
Yes, ma'am, I feel the floor, Mayor, yes, ma'am, that's the extent of, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Alderman Beatty, any changes? All right, thank you, sir. Um, Alderman Walker, any changes?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, Alderman Sistrum?
Yeah.
All right, and Alderman Carver, I assume your change was related to the resolution. Is any, anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Uh, with that in mind, we need a motion to approve the agenda with the consented items as modified. I will entertain that now.
Move a approval letter.
Okay, I will motion Alderman Sistrum, Alderman Little, can that be your, can that be a second?
Certainly.
All right, I have a second from Alderman Little. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, and with that, I will read the consented items as, as approved by the board. First under the minutes is consideration of the minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty twenty work session of the mayor and board of Alderman and City of Starkville. In consideration of the minutes, the October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, consideration of extending the proclamation of a local emergency due to the COVID nineteen virus for an additional thirty days. Uh, next item is request authorization to compensate every employee who experienced a pay reduction due to a twenty percent pay cut or a reduction in hours from April the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty until July the sixteenth, twenty twenty, by giving those employees a twenty percent increase for the number of pay periods they were reduced. Um, under Board Business, consideration of approval of the City of Starkville Street Maintenance Program Policy. Under Airport, request approval to accept work authorization number twenty dash zero one from City, from Clearwire Consultants, Inc. for engineering services for the FAA twenty twenty AIP project to review the replacement of existing AWOS equipment and related site improvements. And number two is request approval to accept the lowest quote from Home Run in Renovations to upgrade the terminal building interior floors and walls in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars at one-twenty Airport Road. Under Community Development Department Planning is consideration of Final Flat twenty dash zero seven, a request for final flat approval for aggregating two lots into one at the northeast corner of Yes to Drive and Mallory Lane in a C zoning district with parcel numbers one oh three A dash zero zero dash zero zero one point four three and one oh three A dash zero zero dash zero zero one point four two. Under Engineering, we have consideration of acceptance of the low quote for the Old West Point Road sidewalk project from groundstone construction and authorizing the mayor to execute a construction contract. Number two, consideration of a construction engineering and inspection proposal from Springer Engineering for the Old West Point Road sidewalk project and authorizing the mayor to execute a construction contract. Consideration of a design services proposal from Neil Schaefer for the sports play to Overfold Parking Lot and authorizing the mayor to execute the contracts. Number four, consideration of approval of the build grant agreement and authorization for the mayor to execute the final version after approval from Federal Highway Authority and MDOT. Five is consideration of declaring nineteen seventy-eight Cat Dozer SN nine six J five four zero zero as surplus and auction on Gov Deal with proceeds in the sale going to the street department equipment replacement. Under Finance Administration, we have consideration of the lowest quote for financing from Bank First in an amount of up to two thou, two million, four hundred thousand dollars over ten years to be made quarterly in advance, beginning February of twenty twenty-one at one point five nine percent interest for the lease purchase of a King Cobra aerial fire truck and a pumper truck with various required equipment. Number two is request permission to accept a memo of understanding with Firehouse Sub to accept a one hundred percent non-matching grant in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and sixty-five cents to be utilized for the purchase of two boats and a trailer to assist the Starkville Fire Department with any water rescues or emergencies. Under, uh, Human Resources, number one is request authorization to hire Christopher Norris and Caleb Harris as apprentice lineman in the Starkville Utilities Department. Number two is request authorization to hire DeQuan Montgomery as a maintenance worker for the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. And three is request authorization to hire Austin Mask as an entry-level firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. Under Parks, consideration of the purchase of the, of civic recreation software at the initial cost of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and at a four thousand, five hundred dollar annual maintenance fee for the two years thereafter as a component to existing city software. Under Police Department, consideration advertised for police mobile video recording and body worn camera system. And under Sanitation, number one, approval to purchase twenty-three front load containers from Plum Creek at or below the source of supply bid approved September one, twenty twenty for a total cost of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Number two, request approval to purchase two twenty-twenty Dodge Ram fifteen-hundred crew cab four-by-four trucks for a total of fifty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars from State Contract Item Number zero seven zero dash four eight five two three one one. Number three, request approval for Stansum Equipment Company to replace the impeller of the Freightliner sweeper at a cost of five thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and two cents, including parts, freight, labor, and supply. Under the Utilities Department, we have request authorization to declare the Water Division two thousand and four GMC Sierra, VIN number one G T E C one four V nine five Z one seven six one zero five pickup truck as surplus as auction on Gov Deal and authorization to purchase a similar vehicle replacement from State Contract at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars. Number two, request authorization to advertise for a source of supply bids for the Electrical and Water Divisions of Starkville Utilities with the intent of awarding source of supply contracts for January one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one period. Number three, request authorization to award the lowest and best bid to Hemp Hill Construction Company, Inc. for the rehab, rehabilitation of the Tremcan list station in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, which included Austin A, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, with ARC providing a sixty-five percent match. Number four, request approval of the lowest and best quote from Ren Bodywork for the purchase of a truck utility bed for the Water Division replacement truck in the amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Number five, request approval of the lowest and best quote from Ren Bodywork for the purchase of a truck utility bed for the Water Division truck number one fifty-five in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-two cents. And number six, request authorization to accept the lowest and best quote from Power Connection, Inc. in the amount of eleven thousand dollars to purchase four F E L dash two four one one P pulp Automation Controllers for the Wastewater Hawk Skater System. And that concludes the consent agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. I made it through without my glasses fogging up. I figured it's a good night. All right, the next item up for us to, to take up our announcements and comments. And, um, I want to give a special shout out to, um, the City Clerk's office, to Mr. Tony Rook and the poll workers. Uh, as we were talking about earlier before the meeting actually began, they have done an extraordinary job of getting a huge number of people in and out today. It was very impressive. Uh, the lines were long, but the movement was efficient, and I think everybody felt as though they got in and got out in a, in an expeditious manner. And so I think, uh, the City Clerk deserves all kinds of kudos for that, so I'm gonna make sure he does get that shout out, so. Uh, other than, what did I say, City Clerk? Well, you would have done a good job. I'm sorry, the Circuit Clerk, I said the name right, Tony, Tony Rook, thank you very much. Yes, the Circuit Clerk's office, I apologize. Yes, although the City Clerk would have done an excellent job for so. So, and that being all, I'm gonna say tonight. All right, uh, any board members, uh, Alderman Carver, anything from you that you'd like to add to the, uh, comments?
Yeah, I do have a few, um, I'm just gonna go down to the list and is the police chief in the house?
The police chief is in the house.
Okay, one of the things he and I spoke about today was, uh, I'm having a lot of complaints, I'm sure we all are, about sign theft. Um, upwards of thirty or forty signs have been stolen the last night or two. If you don't mind, Chief, get up, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions real quick.
Okay, he's just, he's just supposed to be, now, Alderman Carver, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, just as far as i- is sign theft still considered theft and is petty larceny? And what would be the type of fine, um, if someone were to, to sign an affidavit on, on an individual they caught stealing the sign?
Uh, yes, sir, well, it would be a misdemeanor offense, and generally, Mr. Vickers, you run up to about dollars, uh, depending on what the judge says. And you can, with all Mr. Vickers, face, uh, potential jail time. Uh, election times, we see it every, uh, year. Uh, a lot of people talk about, uh, you know, trespassing, um, difficulties with trespassing, or that, um, you got to be able to identify the individuals, or, uh, many times in some of the situations, you have to give, uh, a warning, uh, to meet the trespassing criteria. But, uh, with the theft of the signs, uh, although it's petty larceny, uh, I understand that is, uh, an extension of one's, uh, of values, and it definitely, uh, makes someone mad if they're signing something.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I would just, just echo what the chief said, and everyone be aware and sensitive of your neighbors, and, uh, I'm sure it's, it's nobody that's watching or listening to this that, uh, that would do that. But secondly, um, I want to make some remarks for the Dan Camp family. Uh, Dan and I go back years and years from when I got started in, in the political arena. I always looked up to him as a developer and a friend. And, um, just also to the, to the Camp family, and congratulations also in order for Robert and Emily, who's, uh, one of our city employees. But, um, you know, I think the, uh, the title of Mayor of Cotton District is perfectly fitting for Mr. Camp. Um, and just enjoy everything. We always just agree to disagree, and we would have a good time, good conversation when we, when we did get to see each other. Um, and then third, and, and, uh, not least, is the pay reduction motion that we had tonight. I filled in some questions from that, and, uh, I do want to say, I think that's a noble effort by this mayor and board to, to, um, compensate the employees that took pay reductions, department heads of the city, and that's something that, um, as far as I know, I didn't hear any griping, complaining, or grumbling about it. They stepped up, and so this is a noble right thing to do is to, uh, reinstate the individuals that lost the pay reduction during the COVID. I would maybe ask Alderman Sistrum, from a number standpoint, how we're looking. Um, you know, I think we had an estimation of a thirty to thirty-five percent reduction in sales tax. But, um, Alderman Sistrum, how are we, how are we trending right now?
Well, um, when the pandemic initially began, we had a couple of months where we had significant loss in sales tax, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over, over those two months. Things stabilized, um, and have remained stable since then. Um, next, our next reimbursement check for sales tax, uh, diversion will be mid-November, and it will be the first one that does not have, um, sporting events, the football season, um, in there. So, um, I, I may be wrong, I, I clearly have been wrong before, but, um, I, I, I do expect the November amount to be, um, below the previous year.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I just want to tell you, you know, publicly, thank you for you and whomever worked on this, but it is a noble and, and the right thing to do. And we appreciate our city employees and, uh, our department heads, so thank y'all. I yield.
All right, thank you, Alderman Carver. And, uh, echoing that again, we, we mentioned it during the work sessions about, uh, Mayor Camp and, uh, Mayor of the Cotton District. So absolutely, thank you for bringing that up again. Alderman Sistrum?
I have nothing to add to what Alderman Carver has.
Thank you. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
Alderman Beatty, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much. Alderman Vaughn?
Just one, ma'am. Yes, uh, Alderman Carver, just thank you and your church family, uh, for what y'all done for all the parties we've been, most of all the parties, y'all done a great job. And, uh, and, uh, just thank y'all so much, you're very, very, very rewarded for y'all to get out, you know, your church found a Meadowview Baptist Church to get out and do what y'all done on Sunday evening. Thank you again so much.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn, it was good to, to get under the shade tree and talk to you that beautiful Sunday afternoon.
All right, thank you. All right, the next, uh, uh, opportunity is for citizen comments. This is the time when, uh, someone can come, you have three minutes to comment on any particular subject matter. Um, and, uh, let the board of aldermen know your feelings. So, Mr. Turner, I see you moving forward.
I'm really pleased with the board of aldermen having time to ward, tell us to, to the mayor, to the police chief, to the vice chief, and to your, uh, seven, seven vice chair that, uh, has a term of NACB. Uh, and also, I would like to give credit to the Camp family, um, being, well, there for me, when I got here in two thousand and five, I didn't even have them booked, but I, uh, thank them for that, you know, being there, probably give me through that. And, uh, she has, she has a son, you have, uh, at the back of Bowles Wood Street, uh, we have the pole that's in the middle of the sidewalk, and it's getting to be a blind spot for a lot of people that coming down the Wood Street are, uh, with the pole in the, in the sidewalk. If you come on the Wood Street and you can't see what comes, you know, the, you get the pole that's in the, uh, sidewalk. And sometimes visitation also can be a, uh, a, a blind spot for people. And I don't know if you all, uh, all those intersecting, that's found where anyone's supposed to stop, but anyways, or if they want me to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Turner.
Mayor, I will go look at it tomorrow. I will go look at that tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to make citizen comments? No. All right, seeing none, I'll close with citizen's comments. We have no public appearances this evening. Our first item under public hearing is going to be public hearing consideration of a SE for special exception twenty dash eighteen to allow for an accessory dwelling unit to be constructed at two oh nine Winter Set Drive in an S D two zone. And I'm not gonna read the parcel number, so, Mr. Havlin, it's all yours.
This is a request for a special exception by Mark and Nicole Walsh to allow for the construction of a dwelling accessory unit at their residence at two oh nine Winter Set Drive in S D two zone. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is located in the rear yard, as you can see on this image, and it meets all the requirements for a setback for an accessory dwelling. The accessory dwelling unit is adjacent, uh, to Carpenter Place Condom Area to the north. There is no houses on the other side of the fence from it. Section three point four one lists eight criteria for special exception approval. Section thirteen point three point four of the UDC also requires that a special exception meet the additional standards for that use. Uh, the eight additional standards are up on the screen now. The design of the accessory dwelling unit is compatible with the principal's dwelling and meets the additional standard requirements in the previous slide. The request was noticed, uh, in accordance with section three point four one three E of the UDC. Fifteen property owners of record within a hundred and sixty feet of the center of property were notified directly by mail of the request. A legal ad was published with Starkville Daily News on September eighteenth, twenty twenty, and a sign was posted on a property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning officers received two emails in support of approving the request. This image shows the location of the two houses that submitted the support letter. They are indicating the yellow and the green, the red is, uh, the location of the actual accessory dwelling unit. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed use associated with the special exception request does meet the criteria for special exception review.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, I will start by asking board members individually if there's any questions to Mr. Havlin before I open it as a public hearing. Any questions, Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Sistrum?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Carver?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. With no, with no questions being asked, uh, is the applicant here? Okay, all right, y'all, y'all will have to come forward if you don't want to. Do you have anything you'd like to say? If so, then you can come forward and put it on the record. If not, okay, that's fine. All right, I will open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item now would be the opportunity, either for or against. Either for or against. All right, seeing none, I'll close it as a public hearing, and if there are no further discussion or questions from the board, I'll entertain a motion.
May I leave approval?
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn for approval. Alderman Walker, can that be a second from you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I have a second from Alderman Walker. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you very much. It is approved. Thank you, y'all have a good evening. Uh, second item on the agenda is, uh, variance for pla, the playgrounds associated with daycare. And since you're sitting there, I'll let you go ahead and take it all.
This is a request by the Empowerment Station Academy for a variance from the requirement that a playground associated with a daycare shall be located behind the front building line in the rear or side yard. Um, the daycare is located at seven thirty East Woodville Street in a C and zoning district. The applicant is, uh, wishing to add a canopy cover and a fenced in, to the fenced in play area, and also do some upgrade stewardesses of grass turf inside the area. Um, since the location of the playground currently is considered a non-performing use, any expansion of that is prohibited unless they get a variance or a permanent complaint. Uh, so, which is what this variance request is related to, is trying to bring the existing non-performing feature somewhat in conformance. The request was noticed with, uh, section three point seven three E of the Unit Development Code. Fifteen property owners of record were notified directly by mail. Legal ad was published on September thirtieth, twenty twenty, in the Starkville Daily News, and a sign was placed on the property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, we received one phone call, uh, inquiring about the request. The board, the board adjustment and appeal recommended two conditions of approval. The first, uh, they're on the screen and also in the package, is dealing with, uh, springiness of the ride of horse. And then the second one is that the applicant shall submit to architecture review for the canopy structure, uh, for the paint building permits, to make sure that whatever they're putting there is conducive with the surrounding area. There are six criteria for variance approval, review and approval, which are also up on the screen. And in the opinion of the planning department, the proposed variance request could meet criteria for variance review.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Okay, I see. Do you have anything you wish to add? If so, you can come forward. Okay, please do.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the only thing that I would like to add to this is that-
Say your name, please.
I'm sorry, my name is Martissa Frank-Wall. I'm the owner of Empowerment Station Academy.
Thanks, thank you, it's straightforward.
Previously, this, this, uh, charter facility was Mario's Stabilization Center. We purchased it right here in March, so the playground was already set in place. It is our home, it's an upgraded playground, there's, uh, tur, well, excuse me, there's content down there now. So we want to put down a grass turf so that we can make it safer for the students. And we also want to put up a canopy because during the summertime it'd be really, really hot. So we just want to upgrade it for the safety of our children.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am. All right, I'm gonna ask, before I move into the public hearing, I'll ask the board if there are any questions. Alderman Carver, I'll start with you. Any questions, uh, Mr. Havlin, about this request?
Uh, none, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sistrum?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
Ye- yes, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Havlin, I just have one question, and I just wanna make sure that I'm, that I'm clear on. Uh, looking at the, the subject property, it appears that the, that in order for this to be something that would be, um, conforming, would have to be either, uh, past the front, uh, property, or past the front, uh, building line. And looking at this property, is, it seems that the, the building itself, uh, is all the way to the very end of the, the rear property line. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, if you look at the building in the whole, it, it doesn't conform with the current zoning, uh, either, um, but the playground also doesn't conform to.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Anything else, Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item either for or against, now is the opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak for or against. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move approval, please.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Carver, that was you for a second perhaps?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, I have a second from Alderman Carver. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Alright, it is unanimous, thank you. Um, so, congratulations, you got that taken care of. Number three item, uh, Mr. Havlin.
This is V A twenty dash twelve. Uh, this is a request by Ann Burksfield for a variance from the side yard setback requirements on a corner lot in order to place a carport on the subject property at seven oh one Roundhouse Road in an R in Zoning District. The applicant is proposing to place a carport on the eastern side of the property. However, the existing house is currently only approximately forty-one feet from the property line. The posed structure is sixteen feet wide, the side setback adjacent to the street in an R in Zoning District is forty feet. The applicant is requesting to reduce the setback adjacent to the street to twenty-four feet to allow for the placement of a carport on the east side of the house. Um, this request was notified in accordance with section three point seven point three E of the U D C. Four property owners of record within a hundred and sixty feet were notified by mail. A legal ad was in the Starble Daily News on September tenth, twenty twenty, and a sign was posted on the property at a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning officer received one phone call in favor of the request. There are six criteria for variance, uh, review and approval, that are in the packet and also on the screen, and the board of adjustment appeals did have, uh, concerns about potential conflicts with utility use or existing utilities on that side. Uh, I talked with Starble Utilities and there was no known issue regarding like any use of our utility lines and the location of where she's wanting to do the addition. In the opinion of the planning department, proposed variance request could meet the criteria for variance review.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um, and I see Ms. Burksfield, do you have anything you wish to add? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Alright, um, in that case, I will, uh, ask if the board has any questions of, uh, of the applicant or of Mr. Havlin. Uh, Alderman Vaughn, any questions?
No ma'am.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
Alderman Sistrung?
Um, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Havlin for going ahead and checking on the easement and whether there was any encouragement there that could be problematic. I'm, I'm assuming that it also does not, um, infringe on the right of way?
Uh, no, the right of way is about forty-one feet from the house, so it'd still be twenty-one.
Okay.
Either way, twenty-four feet away.
Thank you.
And Alderman Carver?
No ma'am.
Alright, I will, uh, now open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter now is the opportunity to do so. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against? Either for or against. Seeing none, I'll close it as a public hearing, and do I have a motion?
Move approval, Mayor.
Alright, uh, Alderman Sistrung, beat you to it, Vice Mayor, can we get a, uh, second from you?
Or, or he can have the-
Absolutely. No, no, we're fine. Second is great, Mayor, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderman Perkins. I have a second. If you would, please answer yea or nay, the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Alright, it is unanimous, thank you very much. And moving to the last public hearing, this is, uh, under Mississippi Code twenty-one nineteen eleven. Property is located at one oh eight Tanglewood Drive and two oh three McKinley Street. Um, Dr. Kim, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Um, this is about the two properties, one oh eight Tanglewood and the two oh three McKinley. Uh, code enforcement issues were started on, uh, thirteenth, and a court, courtful meeting was held on October sixth. A public hearing notices was sent out on October thirteenth, uh, so everything was done properly. No cleanup activities have been observed so far. One oh eight Tanglewood Drive is a kind of little bit, uh, tricky situation because it is at the end of the Tanglewood Drive and, uh, it shares the driveway with the one oh six. So, when you look, when you get there, you will not see any, uh, overgrown yard. Uh, one oh six Tanglewood Drive maintained this, uh, driveway pretty well. Uh, and however, when you get to the end of the driveway, you, you will find, find the overgrown lot on your left. Uh, there are some, um, overgrown weeds. It's taller than lighting poles here. Uh, it, it'll be about the ten foot or twelve foot, uh, high, and also, uh, the junk, junk eco is within the bushes, uh, so we need to clean this up. Uh, next one is two oh three McKinley Street. Uh, code enforcement inspections were done and subsequent notifications were provided on September eighth. And courtful meeting was, was held on October sixth. Public hearing notice was sent out on October thirteenth. Two week notice, notice was done. No cleanup activities have, uh, have been observed so far. Uh, the properties on the south side of the McKinley Street and the west side of the Yates Street. And this was taken on September eighth. This was taken on September twenty-eighth, and this was taken October twenty-ninth. So this is the suggest motion. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh, thank you, Dr. Kim. Alright, uh, I will open it as a public hearing, and then we can see if there's any board members who wish to have any comments about this. So, uh, as it relates to these two items, uh, one oh eight Tanglewood Drive, parcel number one one seven E dash zero zero dash zero five three, and two oh three McKinley Street, parcel number one oh two B dash zero zero dash zero three seven. Uh, anyone wishing to speak to this, to these two properties or to this item, please, now is the opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, either for or against. Alright, seeing none, I'll close it as a public hearing. Uh, any questions from any board members? Alderman Vaughn, one of these is in your ward.
Yeah, the one, the one in McKinley Street, you know, that's the one that I call you every year, man, I've been dealing with for years, yeah, after years.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, it's, it's, I just be glad when we get something done to it and make the landlord responsible for. You wanted to call me and contact him every year for a few times.
Alright, thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Uh, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
And Alderman Beatty, one of these is also in your ward.
Oh, no comments. Hey, Alderman, we need, we need.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
Alderman, uh, Sistrung?
No ma'am.
And Alderman Carver?
None, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, and with that in mind, I need to, I need to entertain a motion, please. I have a motion from Alderman Beatty. Do you have a second? Second from Alderman Vaughn. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
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 Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Alright, thank you, it is unanimous. Alright, the next item up are the resolutions. One resolution, uh, requesting the legislature, uh, fund, uh, an extension to, uh, Hospital Road and Stark Road with improvements to Stark Road as a, as a part of the entire project. And then the other one is to fund a, assistance in funding a new Starkville, Kibah County Library. Alderman Carver, you had asked to pull this from the consent agenda, would, would you like to, I'll let you lead off, if you would like to with any questions?
Mine was planning for the library. I missed the, uh, work session. So, from a monetary standpoint, eight million, what, is it an eighty, twenty match from the city possibly, and was it a library or a library slash civic center? What did y'all have in mind requesting for?
Well, I, I will start with answering that. Uh, obviously, it was a, it was a discussion at the work session, and I think what we were trying to do is, uh, look at a, what could be a combination of library and civic center because libraries have changed their, their type of usage over the last sixty years, which is when this one was currently built. Um, it was, uh, the calculation came, uh, by virtue of using about twenty-two thousand square feet, which would allow for meeting rooms, the civic space, as well as the library, and, and multiplied by a rough estimate of three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, which is what I was quoted as being, uh, for a civic building of sorts, um, would be a rough estimate. So that was, that was where the funding dollar amount came from. There was no eighty, twenty match proposed, there was simply a request to the legislature at this point. Our, our match or our suggestion to a match would probably come in the ability to sell the, the current, uh, building and location as something that is, uh, of a prime location. And perhaps, um, that would be our match for funding. As you know, we fund the library to the extent of, I believe, over two mil, no, not over two mil, um, over a mil? Three quarters of a mil, okay, I'm sorry, our mileage has changed, so it's three quarters of a mil, and I got that from Alderman Sistrung, and I'm gonna yield to her in just a second. But that's pretty much where that came from. The civic center portion of it, I think Alderman Vaughn and, and Alderman Little and Alderman Sistrung, uh, all three were, uh, interested in having it be a civic center of sorts. And so that was the effort of creating a, a maximum use type of facility that would meet the needs of, um, the community of both the county and the city for that matter, since it is a, uh, a Starkville County and City of Starkville facility. So, uh, Alderman Sistrung, if you'd like to add to that?
No, I, I, um, when we were brainstorming about ideas, and I'm sorry that you couldn't be at those work sessions with Alderman Carver, I think we may have, um, answered some of your questions during that time. Um, when we were brainstorming about this, um, we realized that the library is outdated, um, that there are some fairly significant repairs that are coming up. Um, that it is a highly used space. Um, the city has, um, almost tripled in size since the building was built sixty years ago. Um, and currently has over ten thousand, well, pre-pandemic, has over ten thousand people a month coming through the library. The usage has changed dramatically over the years from being a place where you would check out a book to, um, a place where you go for, um, using computers, um, and, and a good, there are a lot of people in our community who don't have access to a computer or to internet, so it serves that need. It's an educational facility. Um, it, it could be a, um, a meeting facility, it could provide some meeting space, um, when other spaces are booked in town. Um, it's just evolved, what libraries are, has evolved over the years, and, and we've not kept up. Um, so that's the, the thought, the, the thought behind that. The location is not final, obviously, um, and, and wouldn't be final until we, we receive funding from the legislature. Um, it is, um, a, 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 an opportunity for us to do something that we won't be able to do on our own, and, um, that would benefit a very, very large portion of our community.
Uh, Alderman Little, anything you'd like to add?
Well, I, I would just, uh, on top of that, I think, uh, all the points that Sandra made are, are good points, and, and I also look for, or they mentioned to her a few days ago, uh, the possibility of having a portion of it used more for a civic center. I think that would be something that we have a void in currently in Starkville for, you know, smaller venue or something that the public could use for various activities, class reunions and things like that. Um, I think it could fill a void and be a dual, dual purpose in, in addition to the library.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Little. Alderman Walker?
No ma'am, I think, uh, I, I'm certainly supportive of this resolution, uh, asking the legislature for, for money.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alright, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Alderman, Alderman Carver, does that answer your questions? Do you have anything else you'd like to?
I guess my comments are, uh, the library as, as it sits, in my opinion, is phenomenal. Um, I don't think that, baby, sixty years in the life cycle of the building, and, and especially any government building, is young in, in a sense. Um, I go in there and I get to feel that it's one of the best libraries in the state of Mississippi. So, I guess, uh, you know, as far as requests, and y'all gonna, and ask the, um, the state representative, uh, Rob Robertson, does it have to be unanimous? Or, uh, you know, my thing is, um, I'm definitely a friend of the library. I just don't know if this, you know, global pandemic is a good time to, to be spending money on a, on a match cycle. And so I guess, you know, you, your email you sent us today was talking about, you know, unanimous vote, and how does that play out? Does it need to be seven oh, six one, five two? How, what does it matter?
Um, well, uh, I can only tell you that, uh, um, Representative Robertson has, has been supportive of our request, I will say that. And, and yes, in order for it to be its best and, and be as successful as possible, it, it needs to be unanimous from a board that is together in how we wish to move forward. And so, um, I, I certainly, you need to vote your conscience, but, um, you know, whatever it is you think you need to, but yes, unanimity is one of the things that, uh, is much better in assuring a request to the legislature is successful.
And as far as location, were y'all saying or thinking that the location, the building would be torn down and, and the best case scenario for the library and the money received, building torn down and built on site or moved to a new location?
Uh, we were looking at the potential for a new location, perhaps along one eighty-two where the build grant is going, so that that might also generate, uh, some, uh, sense of activity for downtown, expansion of downtown into that area, and, uh, also show a city commitment. There are some other locations that could be looked at that, uh, might be, uh, something worth researching, but at this point in time, it was, uh, it was sort of in, in limbo, but the thought being it would be a, a new location as opposed to the current location.
Um, real estate value proposed in the current location, have we got any kind of estimate?
Uh, no, I don't, I, I don't, we would need to get it appraised. I don't have any kind of estimate associated with it, and since this would be a number of years down, uh, a couple of years probably in terms of plans and, and getting it together. Um, I don't, don't know what that appraised value would be. We certainly can, uh, can get a rough idea from a real estate agent as to what that, what the catty corner, the other corner went for, uh, when they built Midtown, but I can tell you it is a valuable piece of property, so, uh, and Alderman Sistrung wanted to make a comment, if you wanna yield to her, or do you have some? Okay.
Well, she, she might can answer this question, and this will be my last question, was being from an eighty-four, I guess from a match standpoint. Uh, will we have another vote? I may support this tonight. Will we have another chance through further discussion to vote on it again, uh, if we got a request, uh, approved through the state legislature?
Oh, absolutely. We would, I mean, we would need to come back and see what would, what, uh, the legislature would be offering to us and what we could do with that, with that funding if they, if they indeed approve it.
Thank you.
Alderman Sistrung?
And, and I wanted to just say, one thing we, we haven't talked much about was that if this, if this were to come to pass, um, and we strategically relocated the library in the downtown one eighty-two area, um, it's possible that we could expand their parking, which would help alleviate some of the, um, parking demands for the downtown area.
Okay. Anything, anything further? Alderman Carver?
Um, and, and then with the other conversation about Hospital Road, uh, West Extended, um, I think y'all know I'm, been on, been on board with that from the start. Um, I just think it's one of the largest undeveloped, dep- undeveloped areas and thoroughfares in, in the city of Starkville. Obviously, when you start talking about emergency situations, and, uh, anytime you can reduce drive time to a hospital, uh, it prioritizes projects, in my opinion. Obviously, when you start talking about emergency situations and, uh, anytime you can reduce drive time to a hospital, uh, it prioritizes projects, in my opinion. And so, um, I would, I would definitely be in favor of that. I yield.
All right, thank you, Alderman Carver. All right, uh, I think the remainder of everyone is kind of interested in going on consent, so I believe that without any further discussion, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Move a rule.
So I have a second.
Sorry.
Second from Alderman Beatty. All right, if you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name, and this is for both resolutions.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Walter.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you very much, everyone, appreciate it. Um, all right, the next item on the agenda will be a claim socket. I have a motion of approval from Alderman Sistrunk for the claim socket, do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, Alderman Carver, was that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Carver, a second. Uh, uh, by affirmation, any discussion? Hearing none, if you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walter.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, um, motion five to two, the, uh, voted five to two, the motion carries. Last but not least, on our regular agenda is the update on the new fire trucks. Chief Yarborough, would you please weigh in for us? Uh, Alderman, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Perkins had asked for a brief update, if you would be so kind, sir?
Yes, good afternoon, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor Board of Alderman.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, first of all, thank the Board of Alderman for giving us the opportunity to get these new apparatus, uh, we're very excited about them, it's something that's much needed. Of course, you know, uh, we replaced an engine four, which is past its life service and also replacing ladder one, which is, uh, we had a lot of problems, we spent a lot of money on it, so we thank for the board for allowing us to actually come in and, and to replace these. Also, before we get started, I'd like to thank Lisa Harden, she has been a, uh, Godsend to help with financing, any questions we had, so thank you, Lisa, for all your hard work and getting this taken care of. Uh, as far as the trucks, the trucks are, I spoke with the salesmen yesterday, they are ninety-eight percent finished. Uh, right now, we're waiting on the final inspection, which will take place the week of November the seventeenth. So we'll, uh, drive up on the seventeenth, I think about seven of us, and we'll check every bolt, every nut on the trucks and make sure that they are, uh, in guidelines of what we expect out. Uh, the following weeks, the trucks will be in Rock, the Chupelo, Mississippi, where there will be, once they get there, all the equipment will be placed on there. And they'll be ready to go out to that, uh, we plan on having a truck dedication service sometime the first or second week of December. Out to date, we have three days of trainings on the trucks for our, for our service, for our members, and then the trucks plan on going in service the first, the second or third week of December.
All right, thank you, Alderman, I'm, I'm sorry, thank you, Chief Yarborough. Any, anyone have any questions? Vice Mayor Perkins, you had asked for this, any questions of the chief?
Well, he has done a great job, uh, thank you, Chief Yarborough.
Yes, sir, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Alderman Vaughn, any questions?
No ma'am, thank you, chief.
Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
Mayor, the only, only question I have, and this is for, for the chief, I, I know that it's been discussed previously, is that once the, the new, uh, ladder truck becomes operational, are we still looking, uh, what, what is the plan then for the, uh, ladder, ladder one?
The plan is to sell ladder one, uh, I think Lisa said, uh, when we get the trucks in, we'll start the process to, uh, bid, bidding process, so our plan is to get it sold as soon as we can.
Thanks, chief.
Yes, sir.
All right, Alderman Little, any questions?
No ma'am, thank you, chief.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Uh, I'd just like to congratulate Chief Yarborough and, uh, with the assistance of his staff and the city clerk to be near the end of this process. I'm sure everyone would be glad to, to dot those i's process to even get that new truck.
I'm sure, I'm sure. All right, thank you. Alderman Carver, any questions of the chief?
Hmm, my question I was gonna ask was really, uh, a bifold to what Alderman Walker had asked, is, uh, what we're gonna do with, with ladder one and then two, from a warranty standpoint, how do you ensure? Um, do you feel confident in the warranty that comes with this truck to, to ensure that that situation of ladder one doesn't happen again?
Alderman Carver, we do, uh, we actually got a, a standard warranty on these apparatus to make sure that don't happen. Of course, with any new apparatus, you're gonna have some issues, but, uh, we tried to put in place things that if something did come up, it would be taken care of by the company instead of by the city.
Thank you, I yield.
All right, thank you, Alderman Carver. All right, that brings to the end of our open session, uh, we have a potential or, uh, opportunity to go into executive session for potential litigation if the board so desires, or if there is a desire to make a motion without going into executive session.
Mayor?
Uh, yeah, Alderman Little?
Yeah, I, I want, first I want to thank, um, city engineer, uh, Edward Kemp on a detailed, um, packet, uh, executive session packet, can't spit it out. Uh, and I would, with that, I would like to move approval to authorize the city attorney to institute imminent domain proceedings to obtain any remaining and necessary holdout property interest, interest related to the old West Point Road Bridge replacement project number nineteen zero five two and to provide a sidewalk and a bus stop along Garrett Road as adjacent, uh, adjacent to Rolling Hill subdivision.
Okay, thank you for that motion, Alderman Little, do I have a second?
A second, mayor.
Okay, I have a second from Alderman Sistrunk first, so, um, if there is, I'll check real quick and make sure there's no discussion. Alderman Vaughn, any discussion?
No ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Uh, no ma'am, mayor, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
Mr. Kim? If, if we pop. Is this, if, if we go in the, in, in the domain route, with our timetable, with the money and stuff, is that gonna work out? You, you feel like it's, we're not gonna get?
Yes, sir, I've been at the console with the mayor and the city attorney, uh, we feel like the, the, uh, process will be a ninety day quick take.
We're gonna be tied up and forced. Lots of our funds and stuff.
Maybe for some reason that we have to have a contract on the bridge itself, uh, um, summer of twenty-one.
If you have a contract that you have the intention, but you're, but it's being litigated, that it will be litigated, or, you know, if you're challenged to, to end up in court or something, as long as we've got the contract.
I, I believe, city attorney to chime in here, I believe if we go through the quick take process after ninety days, we have access and ownership essentially of the property.
I'm, uh, uh, Mr. Lattimer, are you there?
I'm there, mayor.
Okay, would you, would you verify or, or modify or just share with us your information as it relates to Mr. Beatty's question?
No, I agree with what Mr. Kemp said, that it's approximately a three-month process when you, when you go the quick take route for eminent domain, and that's what we will try. But even if you have to take a, the long take route, we, we believe that that would wrap up by the summer of twenty twenty-one. So, uh, it's a matter of going ahead and getting approval tonight, so we can get started on this to make sure we meet that deadline.
And Alderman Beatty, I, I said ownership a minute ago, we're not taking the ownership, we're just getting, I just wanted to.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Walker?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Little?
I've just got one question for city attorney as well, um, Chris, if, if the property owner were to come forward once she was served with this process, is it possible that she could decide at that time, I'm, you know, go along with the city and sign whatever documents and we could forego that ninety day process and expense?
Absolutely, she can come forward anytime, uh, we just need that temporary construction easement and a permanent maintenance easement is all we're asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Alderman Sistrunk?
Nothing, thank you.
Alderman Carver?
I'm just highly encouraged with ERBR funds, I mean, that bridge is obviously deficient and, uh, long-term, long time coming, so very encouraged by this, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman Carver. All right, I have a motion and a second, if you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Walter?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you so much. That, that concludes our open session, I'm gonna do a quick read for our work session and then I will entertain a motion for us to recess. There'll be a work session of the mayor and board of Alderman on Friday, November the thirteenth, twenty twenty, at ten AM in Starkville City Hall, it's located at one thousand West Main Street, Second Four Conference Room, public and media are invited to attend. Um, with that being said, anyone wanna say or should we have a motion to recess?
Let's recess.
Do I, I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk. And I have a second from Alderman Vaughn. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Walter?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Yea.
Thank you, everyone, we are in recess.
Y'all have a good night.